Okay.
I'd like to call, we need to order at seven thirty.
United States of America, through the Republic for which it spans, one nation, another God, indivisible, with the liberty of the.
Roll call Supervisor Penny Turner?
Yeah.
Clerk Kimberly Sharp, that would be myself, I'm here. Treasurer Lisa Moore?
Here.
Trustee Daryl Nichols?
Here.
Trustee Michael Pankowski?
Here.
Prove up the agendas, if I got any.
We have to add, if you look at the report here, we need to add, because we did the general, the fire and the road, so we have to, that's what we want to add.
Okay, so add the fire.
Add the fire and the road dispersment for that list, so it's first up right now.
We're adding the fire dispersment and road dispersments. Anybody else have anything?
Is that going under nine?
It goes under reading the monthly dispersments.
That's the fund, all that?
Which one the fund is?
Third page.
This goes under there. Seeing as nothing else?
This area, this area, um, mailer, that was going to be approved, that was sworn out, um,
Um.
that we were gonna do tonight.
I don't know.
To go for the, uh.
For the solar?
Yeah, yeah, we need to add that, for the, your managers.
Yeah. Yeah. Yep.
Uh, you want to put down the old business?
Yeah.
Or the disposses? So number five will be mailing costs for. Mailing cost approval for. Public hearing?
Yeah.
PC.
That's number four already on unfinished.
Is that what it is?
Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you.
So that costs the public hearing, so that's the mailer, is that what you're talking about?
Well, I thought that was something.
Correct.
Okay.
Should we just have the word mailer, so it's?
Yeah.
Queen?
It did.
Well, if you want it to be in the official name, I'm gonna have to add the word in some way.
I'd say we add that.
Anything else?
I didn't see anything else.
Okay, we need a motion?
Make a motion to approve the agendas.
Do you have any other?
Support.
Moved by Pankowski, seconded by Nichols to accept the agenda as directed. All in favor?
Aye.
Will I oppose? Motion carries. First citizen's time. Nobody?
I've got something, I guess. Uh, Brian O'Shea from Apex Clean Energy, um, I just had a, I guess it was a question or comments in general, I did see under new business number four, you all had a, I don't know if this was a discussion or a specific proposal, uh, whether the township needed to add a sort of, uh, kind of there's a moratorium on ordinance or a sort of moratorium on granted permits to solar systems, but typically when I've seen townships impose a moratorium, it's, you know, give the township more time to start working on ordinance when they don't already have one. Um, fortunately, the township has been working on an ordinance for, you know, a year, a year and a half now, uh, and hopefully, I mean, it's gonna have a public hearing next month, um, and will be able to, uh, you know, solicit additional public feedback, and then the board can make whatever changes, uh, you all the necessary to the ordinance. So, I wasn't sure if the moratorium was necessary, you know, personally, I don't, I don't think it is, um, but I'll be interested to hear the discussion for, for what the board thinks, but that was just my two cents, uh, as far as, you know, we had a lot of discussion on this, and there hasn't been a need for a solar moratorium for the past year and a half. Um, does it make sense to pass one now and kind of give an excuse to keep kicking the can down the road, uh, when it comes to, uh, to the ordinance process, so that's all I had.
Anybody else? You in here?
Um, I just got a few comments or questions, I should say, on the, um, treasurer's report. Thank you for, I, I missed last month's meeting, and you did a great job on, on the fund balances and that. But how are we, as far as like the road millage, it says we got almost sixty-three thousand dollars, out of that sixty-three thousand dollars, how many dollars are spoken for? Things that we've already committed, or you guys spent, same way with the fire fund, you know, I'm looking at the fire fund, we got nine, almost ninety-four thousand. Now, I know that, like, for the fire, we have certain obligations every month, twenty thousand, thirty thousand, whatever it is. I know we go to April first, um, I believe is the new fiscal year, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so we got two more months, or one more month, and then we're gonna be into the next fiscal year. Out of this ninety-three or four thousand, how many is already earmarked? Are we gonna have a balance left, uh, in the fire fund, and the same thing for the road fund? Now, I, I noticed that you collected taxes, and I heard you mention that you're busier and all that. Well, we get that money, when's that money actually hit these new account, or?
When I actually do my, um, pay the county?
Mm-hmm.
I'll also disperse to the fire and road and ourselves.
Okay.
And then I'll have better accurate numbers to come March.
Okay, good.
Because at that point, I've collected the bulk of it since today.
Mm-hmm.
But I know I have some stragglers this week, so tomorrow's gonna be starting to figure out when I need to disperse, disperse.
Okay, well, ma-.
Say, okay, Mark, I got, I got a number for you here, for year-to-date, January of twenty-two, we've already spent sixty-eight thousand, um, about sixty-eight thousand and two dollars.
Go ahead. Okay.
So, and we still have more, more to come, we still got the tree removal, got to put in there.
Since the available balance is sixty-four thousand, ninety-seven ninety-six.
Sixty-four.
Just such a no mark, we actually just started, we're gonna write checks out of these now, so that's gonna be dispersed from the general fund, so we're gonna be able to have more accurate numbers the future to come.
Okay. Well, like you said, I, I know it was kind of a nightmare, and, and I'm fine with that, but my, my concern is, as a citizen, we, I voted and I supported the road millage and the fire millage, because I, that was the right thing to do, to get us, our community up par, okay, as far as funding those things. And the last thing I wanna see is sixty-fourth, at the end of the year, okay, we got sixty-four thousand dollars in, or sixty-three thousand in the road millage, okay, that we could've spent, and we're not spending to improve the roads, okay? Every dollar we spend on the roads, a citizen, whatever road it is, they're appreciative of it, they, they see things happening in the community, because these, I think it's another year, and these come up for a vote again, correct?
See, and this year, we've already earmarked two hundred and seven thousand dollars on stoning and stuff like that, so the sixty-four thousand's gonna help pay for that.
Well, as long as, that's what I'm asking, is what money's already spoken for? I know you can't get it all done in one year, but if we got projects going, I just wanna make sure the money's being spent to improve the things, when the road commission, who has to do the work, can get it done, I understand that, okay? Things, you can't say, okay, I wanna do this road, uh, today, we're gonna prove it, and it's gonna happen tomorrow, it doesn't work that way, okay? But I wanted to know that we're all spending the money, and we have things coming, so the people and citizens in London Township sees the improvement. So when this comes up to vote again, they're gonna say, hey, my road's better than it was four years ago when we approved this, they're doing something to fix the roads, okay? That's what I wanna make sure that we're accomplishing, because if we don't, people don't feel that way, they're not gonna approve it again.
And we, we, what we're doing this year in our budget is, the roads will have its own budget, the fire will have its own budget, so that way we can see what's being spent, and it's so that it's all open.
Good. Perfect. Yep, thank you.
It's even better than commingling it, like it was.
The general.
It was just in the process to get it all situated.
I, I get it, I'm, I just ask questions.
Sure.
Because we, we, we need to be going in that direction, so at any given time, you can say, hey, we got an extra thirty grand, we need to fix this road today, okay? If you don't know how much is in the fund, you can't go and do those types of things, because you might be spending money you don't have, that's the only thing I'm coming up with.
Sure.
That's all I had, thank you.
Anybody else? All right, moving on, approval of January tenth, twenty twenty-two minutes, does anybody see corrections? I didn't either, I didn't hear it. I make a motion to approve the January tenth, twenty twenty-two minutes.
I'll second it.
Moved by Turner, seconded by Moore, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. Uh, for my supervisor's report for February, I'm still looking for people who'd be interested in being on any of the following committees. The beautification committee, this committee would meet at least twice a year, the main goal for this committee is to clean up our cemeteries and claimings and stuff around the hall. Also looking for an advisory committee for ag industry, um, it consists of up to twelve members from our community, from Mylan Township, so anybody that's from Mylan that might be interested also. Um, also will provide somebody to, uh, represent their, uh, business there too. They'll meet two to four times per year for one to two hours per meeting, their objective is to sharing information relative to ag industry's quarry operations as related to real perceived impacts, both positive and negative to the community. And the compensation committee, this committee meets every other year, they determine the elected official salaries, there's one stipulation, we just found out, to be on this committee, you cannot work for any governmental entity, so if anybody's interested in that, please let me know. I attended the LMR Mylan Ford, Mylan Board meetings, um, both are working on their budgets, so they should be getting those to us probably within the next month or so. Uh, I've been working with the courts and are close to getting everything set up, so we can order citations and start using them for violations, um, my main goal is to issue warning citations and do everything we can before you have to go to court on any issues. I've started working on the budget, so I'm starting on that, we've applied for several grants to help with cleanups this year, and so far, I think I've applied like five different places. Um, so far, we've gotten seven thousand dollars from Azalea Solar, we were approved for that one, still waiting results on the others. And I've also attended several workshops on how to apply for grants and how to work your grant writing. Uh, just wanna remind everybody, you can reach out to the board via Facebook page or a township page, and our hours or an email addresses are all on there, that's all I have.
Make a motion to accept supervisor's report?
I'll second it.
Moved by Sharp, seconded by Moore, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. Treasurer's report.
This month I did not have one for public, I will have one for March.
Clerk's report.
Uh, we do not have any elections currently presently, however, there is a primary coming in August, and we have to send out, I'm looking for it. We have to send out voter registration cards to everybody, all of voters in the township, um, I have a quote in my hand for a quantity of three thousand, which is too much, it's gonna be less than this, but if you look in your packet, I don't know if you have it or not. Okay, I wouldn't know that you guys didn't have it, but I would like to get approval to spend up to one thousand four hundred and forty dollars to get this mailing out to all of the voters, so I can replace their voter registration cards, uh, we need to do this for the new redistricting. Um, we are trying to, uh, get ahold of other townships and see if we can combine our voters and order the card, cards in bulk, because the price goes down, the larger your order is. But, uh, we need them fairly quickly, so, um, I was gonna get this approved, and if it goes down, it's not gonna go up, it'll only go down.
Is the one thousand four hundred and forty dollars gonna?
It includes postage, they'll do the whole thing, they'll print them and mail them, we won't have to sit there and print them on the printers here and office folks, and she'll save us some time.
For how many voter registration cards?
That's for three thousand, we don't have that many, he, he bumped it up to three, but we only have about twenty-five hundred voters, it goes up and down.
And how? And you can make a copy of that for us?
Yep.
Absolutely.
One thousand four hundred and forty dollars for three thousand, and it's fifty cents to mail one of these?
Forty cents, it would be twelve hundred dollars just for mailing, not including.
So you're saying for two hundred and forty dollars, we're gonna do all the printing and get those out?
No.
No, one thousand four hundred and forty dollars.
The mailing.
And she's saying twelve hundred is for?
Nine ninety for postage. Let me grab.
Four zero.
Yeah, I see what it says on there, that just seems pretty low to me to get out, uh, out of work.
Yeah, the postage is definitely twelve hundred.
Postage is the most expensive thing.
The cards aren't, it's not very expensive, which is also something.
In the meantime, Kim, do you have anything else to move forward?
Um. I don't have to print my judge, I mean, other than the dispersments, which are farther down on the list, although I do have this in my packet, and I wasn't sure why in this book, did you guys discuss?
It's just, that's why I, I wanted to go by the hand up.
Okay.
All right, I'll make a motion to accept the clerk's report, we'll do the, um, approval of the money second, but we'll do the accept a report first.
I'll second it.
Moved by Turner, seconded by Moore to accept the clerk's report, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. I'll make a motion to approve, let's round it off to up to fifteen hundred. For voter registration cards and mailings.
I'll second it.
Moved by Turner, seconded by Moore, and we will need a roll call.
Trustee Michael Pankowski?
Yes.
Trustee Daryl Nichols?
Yes.
Supervisor Penny Turner?
Yes.
Treasurer Lisa Moore?
Yes.
And Clerk Sharp, that would be me, I will vote yes. Motion carries.
Building department report, we had a total of eight permits pulled, for a cost of four thousand five hundred and thirty dollars and ninety-six cents, and they did a total of fifteen inspections. I'll make a, a motion to approve, approve the building department report.
Second.
Moved by Turner, seconded by Pankowski, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. Assessors' report. One, she submitted preliminary assessment rolls to the county for audit. Two, she finalized building permit data entry. Three, prepared March board review notice for the newspaper. Four, preparing to mail assessment change notices, target mail date February twenty-fifth. And five, submitting land values and ECF studies to the state for review.
Make a motion to accept the assessments report.
I'll second it.
Moved by Pankowski, seconded by Sharp, to accept, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. VA report. Some general statistics, as of this report, I have worked on eighty-five different zoning ordinance issues, including seventeen abandoned neglected property, and thirteen blight investigations, six new address issue, issuances, ten split reviews, eight permit plan reviews, eighteen land use inquiries, two solar and two flooding issues. Fifty of the above have either been resolved, excuse me, or otherwise addressed pending further developments as of this time. New initiatives, this month I began researching apparently abandoned and or severely neglected properties throughout the township. I have identified and am reviewing the seventeen mentioned above so far with the aim of working with their owners to secure, maintain, or demolish them as appropriate. I'm also drafting a manner to all residents to inform them of common blight and other issues and provide them information for reporting their concerns. My aim is to understand and to focus on those issues of most concern to residents. Similarly, I've begun to review my goals described last month attached, with members of the planning commission and the board of trustees, in order to focus on issues of most common concern to them as well. Thank you for your time, please don't hesitate to contact me anytime with any questions or concerns, respectively, Mike Navala.
I'm not used to going over that.
Yeah, we got those last month. Any questions? If not, we're, uh, we'll take a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Moved by Nichols.
I'll second the motion.
Seconded by Sharp.
To accept the VA report.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. Daryl, planning commission.
Holy cow, put your seatbelt on. Um, we worked on a lot of stuff in the, uh, in the planning commission last week, uh, one of, uh, needed to be gathering some information. Leroy is also putting together, um, a community profile, he's going back on what he had, so we're in the process of gathering as much information as we can on this. Um, the planning commission, uh, would like to set up workshops on this to go through that, um, so with the workshops, getting approval for NEDA to, uh, start compiling this information. Also, we had, uh, an individual ask if, uh, we could send out a, um, a notice to all the township residents for their input on the master plan. Uh, I told them that, uh, I would bring that to the board as well, so, um, that's what we have on that, and like I said, I know that it's on the agenda already for a NEDA, for that. I, did I miss anything on that master plan, Dan?
I don't think so, we were just trying to gather all the information we could.
Right, um, so, uh, we would also like to set up workshops, we don't have a number of workshops, what we're gonna need, but, um, we're gonna look to set up some workshops to get this master plan, uh, going, so I'll report that now. Uh, we'll have more information after NEDA, uh, uh, has been able to compile the information. Leroy, like I said, is looking for that community profile, so hopefully, uh, I can come back with, uh, some more of that. The, uh, and I know one of the things that we discussed was, um, you know, some of the ordinances that have already been moved up from the planning commission, where they stand right now, whether or not they have been published. The Phil ordinance was sent to the board on November first of twenty-one, um, we're just trying to get an idea of where that's at, and I know the pool was approved by the board last, um, at our last meeting, uh, it was approved, the, the new pool ordinance. So, just looking to see where, uh, these ordinances are at, um, whether or not they've been, uh, published already, so at least we know moving forward, um, where that stands. We had some unfinished business of Ed Gerard to, uh, do the extraction, the thirty-seven acre extractive operation on, uh, Oaky Road. Um, this was approved last June, June of twenty-one, uh, he got the approval with some conditions, those conditions, uh, were relating to, um, the driveway going in and out from the road commission. He had to, uh, wait on, also, uh, I, I don't remember if he had to, uh, uh, wait on a berm that he was proposing to, to move that back, because that was also a, a site plan. Also, he addressed the, uh, uh, issue of water mitigation, um, it seems that he was gonna be able to pump it, uh, across another individual's property. That did not work out as planned, so now the water's not gonna leave his site, it's gonna stay on there, he's gonna pump it from one place to the other. So, all the issues that, um, he needed to address, I believe were addressed, and that, that has been moved forward now, um, he met the conditions that he needed to meet, uh, for final approval on that, he already had approval, like I said, back in June. Um, and he, he, uh, completed the rest of the, uh, conditions that he needed to do. So, um.
Is there any way I can get a copy of that, um, site plan and?
I can get it for you.
Yep.
Just so I have it, I usually get it from plants and stuff, so I know.
Yep. Absolutely. I believe, uh, I believe that's all I had to report on, I don't think I missed anything, that was a pretty thorough report right there from the planning commission, so, um, that's where it stands now, and as the information's compiled, and I know, like I said, I need is on the agenda for later, on updating some of the, uh, the information for us, so we can move forward, Leroy, and I will come, uh, to later meetings with, uh, the number of workshops and when we're looking to do those, so.
And just so everybody knows, I have, um, it was brought to my attention, I researched that the planning commission need, does a yearly report, so we're gonna start doing those, I talked with the NEDA about it, we're gonna start working on that, and the planning commission is supposed to do a yearly budget. So, when, um, we, when I get with Dan, and work on that budget, we'll include workshops in that, so if you need them, you'll have them, that way you don't have to come to this store to get them.
That would be cool.
It'll just be budgeted in.
Okay.
Okay, just so everybody knows, so we're working on that. Okay.
That's all I have.
Make a motion to accept the planning commission report?
I'll second it.
Moved by Sharp, seconded by Moore, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. Monthly dispersments.
All right. From the general fund, a total of thirty-nine thousand one hundred and thirty-nine dollars and fifty-five cents was dispersed. Twenty thousand five hundred dollars and seventy-one cents was payroll, payroll to the contractors that do our inspections, um, employer taxes are missing, and these reimbursements are violated. Do you want me to just go through the whole thing, and then we'll approve them all at once?
Okay, everybody else says?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, we only wrote one check from the drain commission for eighty-eight fifty-six, that was total dispersments there, we wrote one check out of the fire, um, for six thousand seven hundred eighty-seven dollars and eighty-seven cents, the only check that was issued from there. And then from the road fund checking, we issued eight, uh, Monroe County Road Commission, uh, invoice for nine thousand four hundred and ninety-nine dollars, they waited for a while to, uh, invoice us, that is actually the last part of the ditch mowing from last year. We got the invoice at the end of January, and, uh, it was for October, so. Um, and the grand total for the dispersments is fifty-five thousand five hundred and fourteen dollars and ninety-eight cents, if you total all of the farm dispersments.
Okay, let's start with the general fund, I'll make a motion to approve thirty-nine thousand one hundred thirty-nine dollars and fifty-five cents out of the general fund.
Second.
Moved by Turner, seconded by Pankowski, roll call.
Uh, Supervisor Penny Turner?
Yes.
Clerk Kimberly Sharp, that's myself, yes. Treasurer Lisa Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Daryl Nichols?
Yes.
And trustee, Michael Pankowski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Surafund, I'll make a motion to approve eighty-eight dollars and fifty-six cents out of the Surafund.
Second.
Moved by Turner, seconded by Nichols, roll call, please.
Um, trustee, Michael Pankowski?
Yes.
Trustee Daryl Nichols?
Yes.
Treasurer Lisa Moore?
Yes.
Clerk Kimberly Sharp, that's myself, yes, and Supervisor Penny Turner?
Yes. I'll make a motion to approve the expenses for fire budget, six thousand seven hundred eighty-seven dollars and eighty-seven cents.
Second.
Moved by Turner, seconded by Pankowski.
Okay. Um, Clerk Kimberly Sharp, that's myself, yes. Um, clerk Kimberly Sharp, that's myself, yes. Supervisor Penny Turner?
Yes.
Trustee Daryl Nichols?
Yes.
Trustee Mike Pankowski?
Yes.
Tre- Treasurer Lisa Moore?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Make a motion to approve expense of nine thousand, four hundred and ninety-nine dollars out of the road budget.
Second it.
Moved by Turner, seconded by Moore.
Treasurer Lisa Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Mike Pankowski?
Yes.
Trustee Daryl Nichols?
Yes.
Supervisor Penny Turner?
Yes.
And clerk Sharp, that's myself, I vote yes, motion carries.
So, that should help Mark with, with openness on what we're spending and, and the budget. So, the total dispersments is fifty-five thousand, five hundred and fourteen dollars and ninety-eight cents. Unfinished business, snow removal bid. Doing the job too.
Yes, yes. And, uh, Anita's calling a couple of times. I need to get an invoice from you so I can pay you for what you've already done.
I'll raise for something that I said I could do.
Well, um, yeah. Well, yeah, eighty-seven dollars each time the contractor plows the parking lot in the driveway. And the township, so pay the contractor eighty-seven dollars for each time the contractor salts the parking lot in the driveway and the township personnel are responsible for the sidewalks.
Make a motion for Clark Brothers Paint, uh, ink for snow removal contract for eighty-seven dollars.
Per push.
Per push.
Does that go up per inch? Like, so it's just, doesn't matter whether it's two inches, ten inches? I just wanna make sure.
I just plowed twice, don't matter.
Okay.
Just for disclosure, that was the only one we got, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And I've, I've plowed it five times and I've only salted once, which I salted this morning 'cause I wanted to make sure everything was good for the meeting. And I come back just before the meeting and there was a little icy spot out here, I put some more on, I saw.
So, we got a motion on the floor? I'll second that.
Moved by Pankowski, seconded by Nichols. To accept the snow removal bid from Clark Brothers Paint, is it?
Yeah.
Yes.
All in favor? Or wait, we've got a roll call?
I, I got the roll call.
Trustee Mike Pankowski?
Yes.
Clerk Sharp, that's myself, yes. Uh, Supervisor Penny Turner?
Yes.
Trustee Daryl Nichols?
Yes.
And Treasurer Lisa Moore?
Yes.
I've got the notes written down, but can I get a, an actual invoice?
I would.
It looks much better that way.
I wanna be actual, on my side too.
Okay. Number two, grass mowing bids, have you got any bids for those?
No.
Is it Johnny got it for no year? You just gave it to him last year.
No. We gave it to him last year, he'll probably do it.
For a year?
Yeah, it was just for one year, so he'll probably do it again.
That's why I was gonna ask.
But, um, we still have to take.
That's why we're not falling all the stones out into the grass, 'cause his wife checked my high NASA, looked like my first year.
So, she gave you what for, right?
So, do you wanna check with him then and see if he's still interested?
I'll check with him.
Oh, have we got anything on the, um, ditch mowing bids at all?
No, nobody, no phone calls, no voicemails, no emails, no nothing.
And I talked with one guy and he was supposed to send it in. His roll commission keeps asking me, when are we gonna get it? Everybody else has already got theirs in and.
Well, um, I'm sure that if we get one, it will probably be from DK, just like it was before.
She hasn't sent one in yet either?
I haven't seen it.
No? Okay, we'll reach out to both of them again.
I can call.
What was the envelope? What was the envelope that was actually in? I didn't actually look at it, I just know that you had a sealed envelope.
In my packet?
In your packet, yeah. It was there before I.
He was supposed to send one and.
Hold on, let me see, because I just pulled everything out. Maybe there's an envelope in there and I didn't know I had one.
Okay, yeah, I didn't see what it was that was in there before I put the stuff in.
And the guy that did the dozen, uh, county stitches was supposed to put a bid in.
While we're waiting, can I, can I ask a question? When we, did we put down?
I'm obviously psychic.
Specific things that this, whoever mows has to do?
Yeah, it's two times, so DK's the only one?
Yeah, I, I didn't know it was in there, 'cause when I picked it up from the top, it stayed in there, so yeah, DK, that's it.
Is there a closing date on that?
I think it was supposed to be at the end of February, I believe so. So, the end of this month then?
I'm not, I'm just opening it and just leaving it to the side.
I think it's the end of this month.
Cause I think it's actually on here.
February?
I believe so.
Oh, I thought it was on here.
No, no.
Grass mowing bid, I suppose, so.
All right, so we'll, we'll wait and, and we'll put, make sure we get it on the agenda for March.
Okay.
And I'll talk to that other guy too.
So, we're tabling the grass mowing bid?
Yeah.
Make a motion to table it.
Moved by Pankowski, seconded by Nichols to table the grass mowing. And Ken's gonna reach out to the person that's doing it now.
So, it was one by who and two by what?
Me, uh, Pankowski.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Building Department clerk. This has been on for the last couple of months.
Yeah, he's actually had a letter this time. That was dated, uh, January twenty-fifth? Yeah.
Okay, Anita, just refresh our memory too on how many hours, what days?
It is just Tuesdays nine to one at fifteen dollars an hour, just for somebody to do the smaller permits, issues of smaller permits, uh, roofs, windows.
What days?
Cause they're not covering that down?
Just on Tu- yeah, just on Tuesdays because Ken is gone for about a month or so and Terrence is teaching on Tuesdays.
So, you're just gonna kind of be filling in for him on Tuesdays?
Just on Tuesdays, yep, nine to one.
Now, my question is this. Um, are you legally, can you do that? Issue permits and stuff without having a license?
I don't know. Are you issuing permits?
That's what he asked, yeah.
I don't think you can do that.
I don't think you can do that either.
Oh, I don't.
No. Unless if you have any coding credentials, or building credentials, or, or coding, or, uh, oh, you can't do that.
I guess you could take the applications and give them to Terrence to issue.
I, well, I think that's kind of, yeah.
What you gotta do, just take the applications.
Right.
Yeah, you can't.
Yeah, I can't issue, yeah, I'm sorry, not issue the permits, but take the information and all that. They would actually do the permits, but I would, you know, make sure everything's filled out correctly, make sure that they pay and then I give it to Terrence and Ken.
And that's just for, while he's gone for the month?
Correct, as far as I know, yes.
So, for that, for the month of what?
It's starting tomorrow.
Tomorrow, through when?
Well, he, as of right now, I, I don't, he doesn't have an end date. I do know that he's gonna be gone for about a month.
I think he told me thirty, at least thirty days. And I won't give out the personal reasons, but, um.
We set it just for two months and then revisit it, that way we're, you know, recovered.
Covered?
We could.
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
Okay.
Is that a formal, is that the motion, Mike?
Yeah, make a motion to hire a, uh, building clerk for fifteen dollars an hour for Tuesdays only, nine to one for two months only.
For a period not to exceed two months?
Correct.
I'll second that.
Okay, moved by Pankowski, seconded by Nichols. I'm sure we'll have to do a roll call, right, because of money?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And this is also not to be issued, but I want to have stated in the minutes.
Okay.
Trustee Mike Pankowski?
Yes.
Trustee Daryl Nichols?
Yes.
Supervisor Penny Turner?
Yes.
Treasurer Lisa Moore?
Yes.
And clerk Sharp, that'll be me, yes.
Number four, cost of public hearing mailers. I know we approved to send out the mailers for the public hearing, but we never approved the cost. Anita, do you have any idea what the cost is?
I, 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 I think we, I think we spoke about it, we talked about it.
Yeah, we talked about it, we never voted.
We, we talked about it, but we never took a vote on it to spend the money on that.
Correct.
We, we, we all, we're all in agreement on it, but we never took a roll call vote for the actual expenditure.
Yeah, we never made a motion for expenditure, no.
Do we have any idea what it's gonna cost?
Well, there's.
We have about three thousand residents, sorry, less, less census.
Residents that.
So, rounding it, it's gonna cost twelve hundred dollars, more than twelve hundred dollars in postage, I think it was like fourteen hundred.
And then with time?
So.
Fifteen hundred?
Not to exceed fifteen hundred? Is that what you're looking at?
Is it fifty-three or fifty-five? I know it just went up. I think it's fifty-five.
I thought it was fifty-seven.
You guys are killing me.
They keep changing it.
Fifty-eight, fifty, uh, fifty-eight and a half.
No, that's.
No, that's the.
You gonna, dude, you gotta deliver all those there?
Fifty-five cents. Yeah, fifty-five times three thousand.
I think it's like fourteen hundred dollars.
All right, let's go with fifteen, just to be certain.
Sixteen fifty.
Okay, sixteen fifty.
So, we wanna go with seventeen, eighteen?
Do eighteen, just to be sure.
Okay.
What about the time for someone to do it?
I'll make a motion.
Well, that's only gonna be the postage that wants to supply and, and however long it takes to fix them and put them in envelopes and.
Correct.
How about, how about I make a motion to approve the postage at eighteen hundred dollars and whatever additional cost that we would incur to get the envelope stuffed and, uh.
You gotta buy the envelope too, right?
I, we got.
Any additional cost would be associated with mailing those mailers out to the residents of London Township for the upcoming, uh, public hearing.
I'd say twenty-five hundred dollars, it covers us. I think, and if.
Al- also, I, I'm just wondering, because we talked about the survey for people with a master plan to, and maybe include that. Mike had said something in his report about sending residents a letter about kind of what's expected. Why don't we put it just all together? In just one mailing?
That works for me.
Are you gonna be able to do that in time to get them out of the public hearing?
Yeah. Yep.
The survey and everything?
Mm-hmm.
They're really easy to fold in front of the television. So.
Just a word of advice, make sure it doesn't weigh too much.
Right.
You adding a bunch of stuff, it's not fifty, fifty-five cents anymore.
I would say three or four pages would be max.
Yeah, true, yeah, I would say three, I could be a max, yeah.
On taxes, I can only get four things in an envelope before it, what changes the weight on it.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
You gotta say within this, otherwise it's gonna change, just let you know.
We have public hearing?
The public hearing, what?
Survey?
The survey and what Mike wants to put in.
Three things.
What's Mike wanna put in?
He has.
Or what, what stuff?
He said he wanted to send mailers out to residents. Uh, what did he say?
Report, this Tommy can only do one page, he can't do one page.
Right, yeah.
The front and back. Can't be all worried.
Well, that's what I'm thinking, maybe, you know, it all, you know, back to back, you know, two-sided for everything.
It all depends, I mean, I don't know that he would want everything to go front to back because they might not look at the back and they might just want all those pages. If you get three pages, just put three pages in there.
Okay.
What's wrong with putting over on the page?
For me?
What's wrong with putting over on the bottom of the page?
Well, we could do that too, but it all depends on, on what the survey looks like, what the pub- well, the public hearing notification has to look a specific way.
Yeah, it has to be on its own.
Yeah.
Yeah, because he said he wa-
And what was the third thing that you wanted, the survey, the public hearing, and what?
And then, yeah, Mike's mailing about the common blight and other issues.
Oh, oh, that, not that, Mike, the other Mike.
Oh, yeah, Mike don't.
Okay, I went stupid first again.
Z A, Z A.
Okay, and Z A, thanks.
Unless you wanna add something else, Mike.
Smiley face.
Okay.
I want you to stamp everyone with a smiley snake face saying, love, Mike Pankowski.
I'll just stamp.
Okay. I want you to stamp them all.
So, what, what's the amount we're coming up with now?
I'd say twenty-five hundred gives us an area, the wiggle room.
And that's for postage, you got by envelopes?
Envelopes, I don't know, we probably have enough paper.
Oh, yeah, I just can't put another new piece in here.
Just bought lots of paper, we could probably kill it though with.
So, you're saying, you're, you're saying seven, eight hundred dollars to purchase the paper, the time, the envelopes, all in? Because the postage is gonna cost you sixteen hundred.
The postage is gonna be more. I, I used to, I used to do mailings at work, I could do a thousand, I could have.
I'll make a motion for twenty-five hundred dollars.
Second.
Okay, moved by Nichols, seconded by Pankowski to approve up to twenty-five hundred dollars for the cost of public hearing mailers. Roll call, please.
I have a question. Are you mailing them to Myland Township? Because that was brought up.
The only reason why we had to do that was because of the overlay district.
Now, there won't be an overlay district, then we didn't.
Okay, well, I'm just.
Yeah.
I was at a previous meeting and they were talking about, we even had to send them to Myland because they were within three hundred feet of the thing. And I'm just asking before you do mail them out, we don't mail them out to everybody, then we're back here in a month. I, I don't know, I, I didn't follow it that close, you guys talked to attorney. I, I'm just throwing it out there.
That is your point, that is the whole dish, right, too.
Here's, here's the other.
My, my thing is this, we don't send, um, on any other public hearings that affects the whole township, we don't send to other townships.
I didn't think we did, but the one meeting that was at, they said that we had to, and that's why I'm bringing it up. So, if you guys are comfortable with it, I'm comfortable, 'cause I don't think we should either.
Here's, here's, here's the thing you need to be aware of. Today is the fourteenth, and you gotta have it, what, fifteen days prior?
Well, it's already been published and on our website, so act technically, the mailing does not need to be, no.
So, they get put in the newspaper?
Yes.
Okay. As long as it's on the newspaper, then.
Yeah, so we're, I'm sorry?
As long as it's on the newspaper and there, this is just for mailers and all that, so.
And the website. Yep, as long as it's posted with the.
This is a public service and you're gonna get that survey out and Mike's blight thing.
Yeah, and I can have that out and in the post office Friday afternoon.
We're gonna hold.
Did you come up with the survey?
I wanna ask you to.
No, I believe actually, I, I do think that Amanda had asked, so I'm sure she, she probably has some questions and then I can ask, you know, the bo- the boards, what they want.
Well, they're gonna have a survey, who's, they're in the survey, what questions are gonna be on the survey? Do we have a survey?
I actually have a draft of something that I worked on that I do want to send you guys.
Yeah, why don't you send it to me, Amanda, and we'll fill it out. I'll have it ready for you, got you two to look at on Thursday and I'll have them out in the mailbox on Friday.
Now, is that a survey for the master plan?
Yes.
If you go into the master plan and you look in there, there's a five-year plan, a ten-year plan and a twenty-year plan that, that listed all the questions, what each person wanted to see within five years, ten years, what they wanted to see in the township, and twenty years. So, right there is.
Yeah, there's, follow that right there.
That's what I'm saying, it's already in the, the back of the program.
High ten, fifteen, twenty.
Right.
So, that needs to be followed.
Yep, follow that, high ten, fifteen, twenty.
Yep, and that was in my motion. Your motion.
Thank you.
You gotta follow the master plan. Don't put a questionnaire, it goes out. It's already, it's already a done deal, we don't need to reiterate through you.
Okay, we have a first and a second, now we need a roll call for the twenty-five hundred.
Okay. Trustee Mike Pankowski?
Yes.
Supervisor Penny Turner?
Yes.
Treasurer Lisa Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Daryl Nichols?
Yes.
And clerk Sharp, yes.
Yes.
Alright, motion carries, moving on, new business. It's that time, folks, budget workshop dates and public hearing, I need to get some dates set up for March to do our budget workshops, at least two, and then our public hearing and, and approval of the budget. And then next month, I've got board review for three dates.
That's the fourteenth, fifteenth, and sixteenth, right?
No, the eighth, the fourteenth, and the fifteenth.
The fourteenth and the fifteenth.
And then I've got L R meeting and fire, uh, I have fire meetings, um.
When is, when is the fire?
What's, what nights are best for everybody? I mean, is there any nights that'll work that good?
Not Mondays.
Not Monday, no.
Tuesdays, Wednesdays work for me, and I can do Friday a week.
Tuesdays do not work for me, uh, at the beginning of the month.
What's Wednesday look like for everybody?
Which one?
Yeah.
I mean, just as, in general, Wednesdays.
That's right.
Alright, let's, um, dates, I already got three meetings that week, let's do, um.
March sixteenth, I will not be there.
I was just gonna say that day.
March sixteen, I'm gonna tell you, March sixteenth, seventeenth, eighteenth are all, three are bad for me. March sixteenth, seventeenth, eighteenth, um, March first, March eighth, those are all a no-go for me. Without even, that, that's right off the top of my head, March seventeenth and fourteenth.
What about the eleventh?
It'll be to me as well.
That's a Friday.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Is that what works for everybody?
Yeah, that's what you want.
It's a Friday?
Yeah.
Time's good for everybody.
Four.
Alright, yeah, I.
Two thirty?
Is four good for everybody?
I can be here by four.
Alright, that's the first workshop.
March eleventh?
Yeah, at four.
Yes.
That's at four?
Yeah. Um, fourteenth is our board meeting.
And the fifteenth is board review.
Next to the line.
They're all going to drink their beer, on sixteen.
Sixteenth is good for barrel, so tenth and eighteenth.
Yeah, that, that week is bad for me.
Oh, what about Tuesday, the twenty-second?
I can do that.
I can do the twenty-second.
In time, four. And then we have to have a public hearing and approval of the budget, and it has to be done by the thirty-first. And I know that last week is spring break.
What about the, we can do it on that Monday, I know you hate Monday, do you wanna do it on the twenty-eighth, or we can do it on the twenty-ninth?
Let's do it on the. And let's do, uh, on twenty-eighth, I can make it. That has to be sent out to.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if I can do it on the.
Well, I guess we won't be doing it this twenty-eighth and.
Cause that's the week of spring break, how about Friday, the twenty-fifth?
I can't commit to that.
Twenty-third, Wednesday, the twenty-third?
Yeah, twenty-third or the twenty-fifth, I'm, I'm booked, so.
Twenty-second.
That's already a meeting.
Oh. Alright, we'll do the twenty-eighth, I'll just make it work.
We could switch it to the twenty-ninth if you, if you need it.
A whole week.
Oh.
But I'll, I'll just wait until we, I'll, I'll make it work.
I'd make a reasonable time for, this is a public hearing.
What time?
Um.
Later than four o'clock, it's a public hearing. So.
So, yeah, we should keep it at seven, that's usually. Does that work for everybody then? We've got March eleventh at four for a workshop, March twenty-second at four for a workshop, and March twenty-eighth at seven for a public hearing and voting.
Yep.
Got it. Alright.
How easy that was.
Make a motion to accept, make a motion to accept the dates, March eleventh, four P M workshop, March twenty-second, four P M workshop, March twenty-eighth, seven P M public hearing.
I'll second it.
Move by Kinkowski, second by Sharp to approve the March eleventh, March twenty-second, and March twenty-eighth budget workshop meetings. Public hearing. Moving on, audits.
Well, we have to like.
Do you think a roll call vote on that?
No roll call vote, yeah, your name.
Well, there's gonna be money, and are we sending that public hearing out or not?
Yeah, we'll have to.
Yeah, we have to publish.
We don't have to approve that.
Okay, is it, we don't need a roll call then for that?
We have to.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Audit approval, we got our audit back, it was accepted by the state. And Lisa, I know you met with them, you wanna kind of give us.
We all did.
I didn't.
No, I didn't.
I think I remember that from March.
I, I, I think that.
No, no, this didn't come out in March, this is for the fiscal year ending March, this is whenever you met with Sarah.
This is only February.
I talked to Sarah and, and there was only a couple of issues that she gave me, and one was just during the audit that a couple uh, checks were put in the wrong accounts, so that was fixed. And, you know, rec- recorded incorrect records. It says, the township's net position was two point one million at March thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Of this amount deposited, nine hundred forty-five thousand one hundred twenty-seven was unrestricted. This amount resup- represents the accumulated results of all past year's operations. The unrestricted net position balance is used for working capital and cash flow needs as well as to provide for future growth and uncertainties. It means that if we had to pay off all our bills today, including all of our non-capital liabilities, we could with our current resources. The operating results of the general fund will have a significant impact on the change in unrestricted net position from year to year. And I asked her to be here, but she had a prior.
It's prior season.
Yeah, prior season, prior commitment, so. Does anybody have any questions that maybe Lisa can answer? And this, um, if anybody wants to look at it, we're more than likely to come into the hall, we'll leave a copy out front for anybody that wants to come in and look at it. If there's no questions or concerns, I'll make a motion to approve the audit.
Second.
Move by Turner, second by Kinkowski, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Number three, resolution on approving or not approving becoming a charter township.
I'd say we could say general law. There's a lot that comes with charter townships.
Interesting, the board size of the town.
Board size.
Those mills, they can levy.
Yep.
I, I, I'm not really in agreement with, uh, somebody, uh, giving unilateral control over something like that.
Yep.
So, I, I, I don't know if you folks are, are looking to table this and get more information before you make a decision, or are you looking to make a decision right now? Cause I know twenty-one pages is a lot to go through.
I already looked through it all, I, I'm, I'm agreeing to stay as a, uh, general law.
Okay.
Make a motion to stay as the, all general law.
There is a resolution.
Yeah.
There it is.
So we want the resolution of intent opposing incorporation as a charter township.
No.
Opposing, not adopting.
Opposing, yes.
We don't want to put it on the ballot.
Okay, do I have a motion?
So you make a, made a motion to adopt the resolution, opposing incorporation as a charter township?
Yep. Correct.
Who made that motion? I'll second that.
I didn't hear who made it, you might get Mike McCoskey. Move by Pinkowski, second by Nichols to stay as a general law township.
Well, toyed off with the resolution.
Not the resolution.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay. Resolution to establish a moratorium on large-scale solar alternative energy systems, solar arrays, and solar farms applications. It was requested by several board members that we do this, so that the planning commission has time to do research and, I guess, tweak our solar ordinance that we've been working on, so this resolution is to give us the six months' time for them to do that. I can read it all if you want me to, or would it basically just, um, would the board want me to read it, or?
I don't think you need to read three pages of that.
You can just read one, two, three, and four.
One, two, three, and four. Address where solar farms would be allowed in the township, ensure adequate ongoing property maintenance once construction is completed, mitigate impacts on adjacent property owners and residents with measures such as greater setbacks, solar farm size restrictions, et cetera, mitigate other impacts on the township such as limited farmland fragmentation and allowing for continuous natural and wildlife buffers.
Well, number one was addressed with the solar overlay district, which we did not adopt, so that's backtracked.
And I, I think that needs to be addressed again by the planning commission, so the.
Yeah, that was, we, we voted as a whole, overlay district is grade one, and they sent it back to this board stating that they didn't want one.
Overlay.
We are elected officials, we asked it, we want it, we need it.
Do you have any questions on the, um?
Need a motion for the, to accept the moratorium?
Mm-hmm.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the solar and the moratorium.
Move by Moore, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Four, yes, I'll say yes to four yeses and one no. Um, I do request that this be put on, um, I know we got, it's gonna be on next month because of the public hearing, but I wanna make sure that it's on there every month so that we are working on it.
Well, we won't need nothing else on that agenda then. I, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, I've worked a long time on it.
Public hearing?
Uh, no, I'm just saying, anytime that solar's on the agenda, you won't need nothing else because it'll take up the whole evening. I, I, I'm just being honest with you guys, I really am.
Okay, number five, Monroe County Road Commission letter. Uh, this was addressed at the planning commission too, I know Nina brought it up, um, the road commission is requesting all site plans be submitted to them for review, regardless of the size of the project. Even in situations where it may not appear that the Monroe County Road Commission needs to review a site plan because of an existing driveway approach can be used by new development, the roadside drainage system and the utilities located within a road right of way may still be affected. Allowing the Monroe County Road Commission to perform at least a cursory review of the site plan for each development will allow the approval process to continue smoothly, make sure that any permits required by our office are issued in a timely manner. Please feel free to contact me if you have any questions or would like to discuss further, Brian Wilhelm, engineer assistant.
Now, is this going forward, or is this the stuff that the planning commission, like edge of our most recent project would have already been sent there, or is this just going forward? When, when is the, the cutoff? When do you start sending them stuff?
X V C meeting, I would say.
And if this was dated January twenty-sixth, I would say anything from January twenty-sixth on.
Right.
Yep.
Well, that's why I'm asking that question.
I keep going asking.
Well, they ha- they already have his site plan.
They had his stuff?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, cause they were doing it.
Right.
Alright, so anything from this date, January twenty-sixth, board needs to go to road commission?
Alright.
I don't think we need a motion for that. Standard mileage rate.
Well, it's currently, we are paying the employees fifty-seven and a half, the standard mileage rate went up to fifty-eight and a half. It said it went up two and a half cents, but we didn't raise it, I guess, the previous year, so all we're giving them is a, a typical cent. So, um, I guess I'll make the motion to, uh, increase the employee's standard mileage rate from fifty-seven and a half to fifty-eight and a half cents per mile for twenty-four.
I'll second it.
Move by Sharp, seconded by Moore to increase to fifty-eight point five cents. Do we need a roll call for that?
Well, he's, yeah.
Yep.
Be extended.
Okay. Trustee Mike McCoskey?
Yes.
Treasurer Lisa Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Daryl Nichols?
Yes.
Supervisor Penny Turner?
Yes.
And Kirk Sharp, that's myself.
Yes. Motion carries. Number seven, master plan updates, P C secretary work, census population and growth.
You put this on here?
The, uh, planning commission wanted that on, cause it's gonna cost money.
Yeah, to compile.
Yeah.
Information for the master plan.
The information's on the U S Census website and also SimCog, it's right there, it just needs to be.
Pulled out?
That's it, yeah.
Yeah, you had reported on that.
Earlier, yeah.
Yeah, earlier.
Make a motion to allow the census population, the work to be done.
Second.
Move by Pinkowski, seconded by Daryl Nichols.
How long does that, you think that's?
I don't think that's gonna take very long at all, maybe a few hours if that. I've got most of the information already, I just need to put it in the right columns, that's all.
So we're gonna approve a dollar amount, or?
I'll do that, the fifteen dollars an hour.
Oh, so you do it on.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Anything that's not the clerk stuff, it's fifteen, it's fine.
Alright, number eight, P C extra meetings to work on updating, oh, I'm sorry. I'm trying to get out of here. Okay.
That box of chocolates won't.
Hush. Move by Pinkowski, seconded by Nichols, all in favor?
Roll call.
Oh, for the fifteen dollars an hour?
Yeah.
She's doing that every day, why do we have to?
We're still spending money on it.
We're still spending money.
Okay, for up to how much? How many hours?
Well, if, if it takes her two, three, four hours, I, I mean.
No more than, no, not exceed four hours.
Okay. Alright, roll call.
Um, Supervisor Penny Turner?
Yes.
Kirk, Kimberly Sharp, that's myself, yes, trustee Daryl Nichols?
Yes.
Trustee Mike McCoskey?
Yes.
And Treasurer Lisa Moore?
Yes.
Motion carries. Number eight, P C extra meetings to work on the updating the master plan. Do you guys have any idea how many meetings you wanna do?
That'll probably be in the budget that you and, uh, Dan put together for, uh.
This year.
This year.
I, I was looking at eighteen min- eighteen me- meetings a year, I do twelve.
An extra six.
So that would, that would give us plenty.
Gives you an extra six.
That would give us plenty then.
An extra six.
I mean, we're thinking a couple of meetings, but that would give us an opportunity to work on something else if we needed to.
Yeah, there's a lot of times I thought a couple of meetings on something would get the job done, and it, uh, it hasn't.
So eighteen gives us kinda six extras.
Yep.
And that'd be included in our budget, guys, so we can discuss it then. But, um, what we're gonna do is break down the planning commission, who have its own little budget, which is included in our zoning budget already, but according to the red book, they have to have their own budget, so.
When's that been done last?
It has not, I don't think it's ever been done.
Right.
I don't remember.
We're just turning over a new leaf, Daryl.
Well, I know I chaired that planning commission for four years before you took over, and I never submitted any budget, never was asked to.
Actually, don't give the impression that I took over, it just kinda took out a weight, you know?
Yeah, and they're supposed to do a yearly report.
Yeah, I don't think that's ever
I, I'm just telling you, that was, that was never done while I was a, the, the chair of that, and I was never asked to do that. I'm just saying.
I understand.
I remember him asking you.
Well, I'll tell you what, if I would've been asked to do it, it would've been done. Just saying.
All right.
Maybe I'll ask you to do it now.
So I don't really think we need to approve that, 'cause I'm gonna, I'm gonna do the budget, it'll be in the budget, to approve it, up to eighteen. That should cover you guys.
That would be good.
Make it happen, Darryl.
Okay. Second citizens' time, anybody? Oh my god, okay.
Let me get my thing here. Um, voter registration.
Voter registration or voter ID card?
Voter ID card, whatever that is, whatever you're mailing out. What is the purpose of that?
Um, it has their precinct on it, um, there's, there was a redistricting going on, so we've been instructed by the state to issue new voter registration cards to all the registered voters in our township.
So everybody, even if you're already registered, you're gonna get a new card?
You're gonna get a new card.
Okay, all right.
It'll show your precinct and your school district, you know, that
We only have one precinct, right?
Yeah.
As of right now, but I don't
You know, but we've got A and B for, you know, Dun D School District and Mile and School District.
Right, but it all depends on the redistricting.
Yeah.
I, I, because I believe that some of the senators may not be, yeah. Some may have it, some may not, so we may have another precinct now. We don't know.
Yeah, they're not quite finished, but they told us
No, the lawsuits have started now.
Oh, yeah.
I got, yeah, I got, yeah.
Um, secondly, master plan workshops. What is our goal for that?
To redo that whole master plan, to update it. It's been updated two thousand three, or two thousand four, whatever it was?
Yep. Yeah, it's, it's been looked at a couple of times, and any, everybody at the time said it looked like it was fine the way it was, or wasn't really, it was just agreed to adopt it as it stood. And it really hasn't had anything updated in it, and I think, you know
Fifteen, eighteen years.
Yeah. Yeah, I was on it. Last time it was done. Well, could you come back?
Yeah, the last, yeah, the last census information was from two thousand, so
Right.
That's twenty years.
So, no, I, I'm just, you know, I'm
So we've got tw- twenty years added to the census information.
Right.
Hmm, okay. Yeah, I, I, I agree with that. Um, grant money. You said you have a bunch of grant money. Where's it fall out in the budget? Is it in this general fund?
It's gonna be, it's gonna be. I'm gonna have a line item just for grants, 'cause we got the federal grant money in.
Okay.
We got half this year and we'll get half next year, so I'm gonna have a line item for just grant monies earmarked for just, you know, grant monies, and then we can
So the money that we received was just dumped into the general fund?
That's where SimCog jumped it, or dumped it, and then we sh- I wanna move it to a separate account, but that's not my
Well, no, I'm just, I'm just asking, we were talking about it, and you said, well, I got seven thousand dollars for this, and you told me you got some other thing, and I'm looking, I, I didn't see it, so that's why I was asking you.
My thing is that, probably what I'll do, Mark, is, well, have a, uh, put that federal money in its own account, um, and then in our general fund count, I'll probably just have a line item for other, um, normal grants that we get. But the federal money is, it can only be spent on certain things, so we have to
And you have to keep track of it, so it's very important that you do that, 'cause you get in trouble.
Yes, yes. So, it's probably gonna have its own checking account, its own
Yep, okay, well, that's, it, it just dawned on me when you mentioned that, and that's what I was thinking.
No, the, the regular grants that I get, it'll probably be just a line item in the general fund.
Okay. Um, also, just another thing about Plank Road, I don't know who drives up and down it,
It's getting rough.
It, it's, you can see big cracks, and you go down, it's like this, it's
I know Dory's still, she's still talking with the states, and she's still on them.
It's gonna be a disaster. That's all I have, thank you.
Anybody else?
I just had a, a question. You were talking about, someone may have mentioned the, the overlay district, and I'm remembering back to the last solar public hearing, which, uh, was a hearing on the overlay district, and then following that, the Planning Commission didn't advance the overlay district, but just kind of advanced the original ordinance, uh, as it was written. Uh, my question was, does that mean the overlay district is, you know, still sitting with the Planning Commission? Um, and likewise, the ordinance has been sent back to the Planning Commission, so they have those two distinct items they could act on or not act on? I just wanted to understand the process of after this March public hearing. Um, what have they said?
And Darryl, I guess I should let you answer that, you're okay.
So, so, I, I mean, we can, we can do a group answer on this, it, it doesn't matter to me. So, that, that solar overlay district was drawn on there by our former zoning administrator, and, um, I, I don't think it had been approved by any township engineers, or any attorneys, or anything else. He just got a crayon out and drew an overlay district to what he thought, you know, would make an overlay district in which
You got a, you got a letter from the engineer on that?
Yeah, and he was
Said that he says, he had states that this is about the floodplain, said it recommends not being a floodplain, but it can be built in a floodplain.
Yeah. 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 So, nobody was, um, I, I guess notified that he was gonna do that, and he just showed up and said, hey, here, here it is, you know, so that's, that's one of the issues on the, uh, the overlay. The other thing why a public hearing is being done, uh, since our last public hearing, it seems that a lot of people in the township never knew about this, they didn't hear anything about this, and now it's been brought to their attention, they would like to have some input in, uh, at least the place they live. And I don't disagree with that.
I think these comments are made for, uh, should be made during public, uh, uh, the public hearing, 'cause this is public comment, not public answers.
What's that?
This is public citi- or, um, comments, this is citizens' time.
Yeah, I know, I'm answering his questions. So, he asked a question, I'm gonna answer him. Supervisor Turner asked me to answer him. So, the public wants to, um, do that, so we as a township, more, okay, that, the mailer's going out this week to let everybody know of the upcoming public hearing, and everybody on this board voted in favor of it at last month's, uh, meeting. So, that's where it stands.
Mainly wanna cover our basis, so nobody can come in here and say, we were not notified, you're doing things without our notice, I mean, it's not something that we usually do, but because this is such a hot topic, we're gonna make sure that everybody is notified, so they can have their input, if they don't show up, then that's their, on them, but at least everybody will be notified.
And from there, the Planning Commission would have it on their agenda for either their March meeting or April meeting, or whatever.
It is on the March meeting.
Um, yeah, there, there's the public hearing, and then they could act on it in March, or in April, or, or whenever they act on it, and they could act on the ordinance, or they could also act on the overlay, since technically both of those things are separately back in the Planning Commission's court, essentially, is that accurate? Okay.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Well, I just gotta comment on, on the solar. Um, solar's not gonna go away, guys. Um, if you, if you look at the, the infrastructure bill that just got passed, the one point seven trillion dollars, there's literally hundreds of billions of dollars in solar farms, okay? It is here, it is going to happen. You got Detroit Edison with the coal burner out here, I think it's twenty twenty-eight, it's gonna be decommissioned. Detroit Edison, as a company, is out trying to buy and lease ground, they wanna put like a ten thousand acre in Monroe County, solar farm. It's here, it's gonna happen. As a township, the only thing that we can do is, is try to protect our citizens, okay? As far as putting up fencing, buffers, or whatever. Nobody wants anything by their house, they wanna, they wanna look out that farm field and think it's theirs, okay? I get that, but the same token, it's here, it's going to happen. And as a township, I don't think you can stop it, all you can do is regulate it. And, and so, I think our Planning Commission has done a great job as far as setbacks, buffer zones, and all that stuff. And the, these people that come up and say, I don't want it across the street from me, it's gonna happen. I- i- it just is, it's just a fact of life. There is so much federal money behind it, it is going to happen. That's all I have to say.
Anybody else? Amanda?
Um, I actually have a few things. My, uh, first thing is, I'm wondering why aren't the, their dispersment sheets out here for the residents?
I just didn't make copies of them, that's all.
Well, this isn't the first month, and I'd really like to see the dispersment sheets, I, I'd like to see the breakdown, um, and you guys talk so fast sometimes up there, it's kinda hard to keep up, you know? Um, but I, I'd really like to see those back, um, on the table again with the minutes. Um, another thing, uh, this is kinda like an FYI, Darryl had mentioned in, um, his PC report, wondering about the ordinances, whether they've been published. We went through those before, make sure you leave the zoning ordinance, because if they're not published, within a certain amount of time, the process has to start over. And I know with those words, Darryl will be very upset, because he doesn't wanna see anything, again, that he's already fed for.
I, 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 there, there's some of those, it's been worked on since twenty seventeen.
Oh, no, I, I know.
That's, that's what I can tell you.
I know, but I'm saying, you, it was questioned about, you know, whether they were, they were published or not, and they're not active until they're published. So, again, just an FYI.
Yeah, actually, that, I'm gathering all that information, and all the publications, stapling them all together.
See, and that's gonna help with the, when we do a annual report for the Planning Commission, that way, that's bringing it up. Lee Wery told me that you had a, a master list of ordinances when they were started, when they were published. You have that?
Um, I, I have, I have all of my work that I did as secretary. I don't know if, um, I have all of the publications, because I was not in the first department that long, and it was the first department that did the publications. However, um, you can search on Monroe News, just search London Township, and it gives you everything that, um, London Township has mentioned in, including publications like that. Um, but that also brings me to my next thing. Um, I'm kinda disheartened, um, to an extent, to see Anita being pulled over from the Clerk's Department, because the Clerk's Department is still breaking quite a few state laws. Um, and I'm not saying she's not, you know, I, I know Anita would be great at the other jobs, but I think the Clerk's Department, um, truly needs her.
I'm here tw- on Mondays and Thursdays, and the only time I don't do clerk stuff is during tax season, and I'm collecting taxes. Other than that, I'm only working on clerk stuff. Everything else I'm doing uh, at, through my VPN.
Well, the, um, minutes have not been posted on the website as prescribed by law sin- since last November. Um, the synopsis, which is required by law, has not been put in the paper but once
No, it's been every month, I, I'll get that for you, it has been every month.
It's the same, 'cause I know I approve it.
Yeah, you approve it every month, I do it right after I finish the minutes.
Go ahead and look on Monroe News.
I will.
One, one time, in almost a year and a half.
No. I completely, completely disagree with that, 'cause I'm the one who does that, and I'm the one who sends it out. And I do it every month.
Well, it should also be posted on the website, because that's also required by law, since we maintain a website. And that is actually better, because it's
Do you have a copy of the law, you keep required by law, do you, can you tell me what law, where it's at, so I can?
I don't know if I have it in my phone or not, but
Just tell me where I can get it.
Oh, it's in the red book.
Okay.
It says it in the red book, when you look under the, uh, publishing meeting minutes, both of those items are listed. It states that if, um, you maintain a website, the minutes have to be posted on the website, uh, which they, they have to be available to the public eight day, eight business days after the meeting. So that would be in that
Yeah, I know, there's been times the PC hasn't done that, I mean, you were part of the PC, I know that, so
Well, the, the PC minutes haven't been updated since I was last taking care of the website.
Anita, do we post it, or is that the, our host that you said took up?
I'm posted, I'm posting them now.
Okay, I know we were having problems before with hosts getting it on there.
Right, yeah, the, it's when IT Wright was still doing it, now it's STG.
I think I didn't find December when I was sitting there, but that was about on the website, but, uh,
Yep, I'll go home and do it, I'll do that tonight.
Well, I just looked on the website, and the last one it shows is November twenty twenty-one. But another thing that, um, on the website, there were, I think, PC minutes posted on the board meeting minutes part, or the other way around, one or the other. I think it was PC to the board, um
That, that, I believe is correctly.
Okay. Anything else, Amanda?
No.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, I'm sorry, Amanda, go ahead.
Just quick, uh, we're not against solar, but we just need to place it correctly, and we just need to recognize that there is more than just a certain amount of people, they're gonna make a lot of money, but I don't care about that. But I just really wanted to s- to strictly say that we're not against solar, but we need to place it in the correct area for our community, that's it.
Not all over the township.
Yeah.
So we're basically like an overlay.
Is that what you guys done in Mile and Township?
We need to
Mile and's so sneaky, they're trying to do whatever they can.
Yeah, it, it's, it's, that's why we're here. We're on both sides. So, um, but that's, that's mainly the whole process of this, is just to make sure that we know what's gonna happen, even at the end of this, I mean, what are you gonna leave your kids? The decommission, that's what I'm really big on, is the next generation. Sam?
All right, left's been said, I guess. I gotta say something. You know, our prior solar district was put together by somebody that I'm not sure what his name was. It wasn't very proper, it was still scattered and all over. When the Planning Commission decided to go and say, that solar overlay is improper, we knew it had floodplains, it didn't make any sense. And we decided, what position in government should pick winners and losers? I don't think government should, so that's why we went back and said, the fair way to do it is to say it's gonna be on ag land, ag one and ag two, and then anybody that has paid taxes, made payments on a piece of property can make a decision, what is best for their life and their family, because they, it's, it's a landowner's rights issue. And so that's why we got rid of a very inept overlay district. So if we're asked to create an overlay district, and it says, well, it can only be on the west side of the township, then what we've essentially done, if there's an effect to property values, we have created the effect, whether it's better or whether it's worse, only to that public township, and I don't think government has the right to do that. So, that's why we got rid of a very inept, improperly designed overlay district, and thought we would do something that was fair for all landowners. That's why we done that. And personally, I don't wanna look across the street and see it either. But I didn't buy that, I didn't make the payments or pay the taxes on it. And I believe in property rights.
Yeah, 'cause you live right over there where they wanna do it.
So that's why we worked hard to create setbacks and screening, so that eventually someday, it would be driving past a green belt, the solar panels would be behind. And, uh, anyways, not preaching, just pointing it out.
This could go on all night, I guess so.
No, it can't. No, it can't.
No.
No, it can't.
Pen and D's a top.
Yeah, I can. Anybody else?
Um, not here, it can't.
All right, word of trustee comments, Lisa?
Well, I wanted to reflect my comment to the solar panel situation. It is our job as a board is to protect our residents, when it comes to that, it should be in industrial farm area and not on a PA one sixteen. Our job is to try to, I think, I feel, support the farmers and not have them, have the right to do the one, PA one sixteen. 'Cause I think we're gonna have a problem in twenty years without PA one sixteen, because I think we have a problem in twenty years with that situation, I don't wanna be part of that board that does it, so. I have a problem with our solar, and it's the way it's set up, the way it is, because if I'm not mistaken, wasn't that company right there sitting there when they did the plant, they planned the solar ordinance? So, who's gonna benefit is that solar company, and I don't think anybody should be in part of running a solar zoning ordinance. Who's gonna benefit from all of our residents, that's the problem I have. And that's why I went in that meeting that I met two last Wednesday, which Mike was there and some other people from planning commission was there, and it is there to protect the PA one sixteen. It should be, and we're not saying we can't have it, but it needs to be in a special area, like industrial, brown, somewhere, it's, their land's still, that's not usable.
The states approved the PA one sixteen, though, the state?
They did, doesn't mean us as a, as a whole, as a township, doesn't even need to follow that. We need to help protect our residents here, so.
But again, wouldn't that be the property owners with the PA one sixteens?
Protecting the land of the PA one sixteen, yes, they may own it, but I think as a whole, we need to learn how to protect that. There's other ways of doing solar panels and not in areas that you still have farming lands.
But if the farmer has PA one sixteen solar land and wants to use it for that purpose, why are you taking his right away to use that land for that purpose?
When they signed it for a twenty year lease, they were excited that they didn't have to pay personal property taxes.
Rights for that PA one sixteen and all of a sudden they wanna give that up to solar, I'd be S E Y. Yes, I mean, that's my comment.
Darryl?
So, the last time. In the township, there was a, a huge, uh, divide on, um. Whether to move forward, to opt out, to do whatever, and it had to do with marijuana. And when we had that, what we had was, we had a joint meeting with the board and the planning commission. And I certainly would like to suggest that, because I I've sat through a lot of planning commission meetings on solar. Um, I've sat through the board meetings here on solar, and I would like everybody to be in that room. When that public hearing is being done, so everybody gets to hear it, everybody gets to hear the input from everybody in the, the, the crowd. Uh, there's been ordinance. After ordinance that has come to this board and the planning commission has taken a lot of time on it. And to have that ordinance either shut down or questions asked, because people don't participate. With what's going on in the planning commission, you charge that planning commission to do their due diligence. To go ahead and make changes to ordinances. But after the planning commission has worked on an ordinance for maybe months, sometimes years. It comes to the board and there's a hundred and fifty questions and it gets sent back to the planning commission. Because people don't do their homework and due diligence, like the planning commission has already done on an ordinance. So, I would like to invite everybody to that, uh, public hearing for that. And if we need a motion to make a joint board meeting, I will certainly, uh, stand up and make that motion, because. We've had them before and I would like to see that happen at this upcoming one in March, I I would like everybody's participation in that.
A joint board of seventeen planning, planning commission meeting.
Yep.
That's in, what's the date?
First Monday in March.
Seven.
Yeah, seven.
Well, I I'm just saying, we had it on marijuana, we certainly did, because I sat right up here while the board was along that wall. The planning commission ran the meeting, the board was there, and that was on marijuana.
And who took the minutes?
Uh, the planning commission did.
No, you need to set, set up minutes.
Yeah, well, I was on the planning commission at that time, the planning commission certainly kept the minutes for us. So, I I don't know, uh, if you need a motion to make that a joint board meeting or how that works. But, uh.
Well, that would be a special meeting.
It's already a special called meeting, it's a public hearing.
Yep.
No, it would be a special meeting.
That's, what whatever we need to do, I I would like to do it, because everybody needs to hear from everybody that's gonna be there.
Yeah, we'd have to, we'd have to publish the special board of trustees meeting along with the.
Public hearing? Well, well, it would be with the public hearing, it would be with the PC meeting.
However, you guys wanna do it, I, that's, that's my comment for.
Do we have enough time to do that?
You'd have to leave so.
It has to be published, right?
Right.
By business days.
Yeah, but sometimes it could take two weeks to get an equal paper the way they do it now.
The biggest reason why you have to publish it, it's gotta be a thing, is because all the board members are gonna be at the same meeting.
Correct.
And you'll have a forum.
But it's a special meeting, you only have to post it eighteen hours ahead of time.
Yeah, special meeting.
And we got eighteen or nineteen days, whatever it is.
Right.
Just gonna add your smiling faces to the crowd.
Well, you you know, here, here's the thing, um, we as a township need to hear. From everybody in the township, not part of the township, and then need to come back and give a brief overview of what happened. Uh, I think everybody needs to be in that room and feel.
Land on attending anyway.
Feel what's going on in that room, I really do.
We're sitting fine, we're gonna be sitting over here.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll just, uh, if you wanna publish it, we'll do a special meeting for the board that night too.
Make a motion to.
We can put that on the door, though.
Yeah.
Right, on the website.
I'll second that.
All right, by Pinkowski, seconded by Nichols to hold a special meeting March seventh at seven thirty.
Yeah, that joint meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, or she carries. Is that it, Darryl?
Yeah, that's it, that's all I got.
All right, Kim. Mike?
Yeah, I went to, uh, two solar meetings this week, or last week. Um, wish, uh, a lot of the PC members and board members would have been able to attend to it. There was a lot of great information on both seminars that, uh. Um, Lisa and I had went to and there was a few commissioners that went as well, so, so unfortunate that there wasn't as many there.
Anything else? No. All right, I have.
We have this meeting together, where are you planning on stuffing all these people, this building only holds a hundred and three people, top capacity.
Well, I have this, I don't know, they might stand outside, I mean, we can only do what we can do, I I checked on CNN.
Capacity, you can't go over it.
Yeah, they're, they're gonna have to.
That's why I brought it up, you know, I agree with Darryl, everybody needs to be in on this and stuff like that, but.
You have.
We've got, what's, what's the, the rating, what's, what's our numbers that we've got, you know, for residents?
Well, you only have this one little right here.
It's, I'm sorry?
I don't think as many, I don't think so, I think. I don't think a hundred and seventy people.
A hundred and seventy, no, our, our, it's.
A hundred and seventy.
Hundred, so you're gonna want you roughly hit that, you have to.
But just stay in the door right there.
It's a hundred, yeah.
Hundred and two, hey, I was off by one. I I really, where are you gonna put them at, you know, because we, we can't do it.
Well, we'll just have to put what we can and then I I mean.
Oh, you had to turn the meeting.
I'll open those windows, we'll be all, we'll find them, we'll be all good.
I mean, that's all we can do, but we can't. I mean, I guess we could open that door and set some over there, they just won't be able to hear as well, but.
You have to enter in the meeting if you had it next.
All right, I got a board comment. Uh, it was brought up la- at last month's meeting by a resident and a board member that we were breaking the law by considering a solar ordinance, because it's not addressed in our master plan. Um, so I did some research on that. I spoke with our attorney and her opinion is, as for solar, you are not breaking the law by considering it, regardless of whether it is addressed in your master plan or not. The board has the right to consider amendments to a zoning ordinance and a zoning enabling act. And I talked to someone with the MSU extension and they did an article, and he referred me to an article, in that article, it says that. Zoning ordinance is a law with penalties and consequences for not following it. A master plan is a policy document that expresses intent, it's not an enforceable document and it's not law. A zoning, zoning ordinance and a master plan are not the same thing. A master plan is not enforceable and attempting to do so can can get a community in trouble. The master plan is not a regulation and should not be expected to do double duty as a law. Statute gives ordinance-making authority only to legislative bodies, not planning commissions. Master plans are not written in regulatory fashion, they lack language with clear directives or requirements. Many miss, master plans are written with goals that are often best case scenarios of the future. Many times the purpose of the goals is to set a direction, but not a definite expected outcome. Finding master plans are often written with objective measurable progress points and strategies. Policies, tasks, tasks and methods to be carried out by various agencies of the local government. I want to clarify to the residents and board that we are not breaking any laws when considering any ordinance, whether it is referenced in the master plan or not. That's all I have.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
By Turner, seconded by Nichols, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Or she carried a turn at nine, I got my turn.
Don't take the abs out.
Well, I know. When did we originally talk about this, because this passes in twenty twenty one, we didn't.